Can I have a board certified closed session, please?
Uh, Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discuss only public matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordago?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Mrs. Hunley, is there a second?
Second.
Q. Mrs. Donner.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle? Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordago?
Aye.
Alright, and item four point zero one is a public hearing on the FY twenty-six operating budget. However, I'm told we have zero participants in that public hearing, so we will move on. Move to item five point zero one, Announcements and Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I wanted to share several items for the knowledge of the board and the viewing public. Uh, one of the things that has been transpiring most recently for administration, specifically myself and our Assistant Superintendents for School Leadership, uh, have been our mid-year review meetings at each of our schools. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to meet with principals, assistant principals, their leadership teams, and staff members to better understand how the work is happening in each of the buildings around the school improvement plans. Those plans, by way of reminder, include goals relative to literacy, math, science achievement, uh, focused on daily attendance, focused on chronic absenteeism, and then at the high school level, focused on the on-time graduation rate. It also gives, uh, central administrative leaders an opportunity to hear directly from school leaders and school teams around anything that might be necessary in order to finish the school year in a strong fashion. Uh, one of the things we've talked about in WJCC for a number of years is finishing strong, and as the calendar goes from February to March, we certainly want that to be a focal point for all of our school teams. It's going to be, and it generally is a busy month for human resources, the month of March. Uh, there are two items that I wanted to point out for the board's knowledge. Uh, one, we had initially scheduled a job fair on Monday, March the third. Uh, however, that became a school day as a result of a fair amount of snow during the month of February. And as a result of that, we have shifted the job fair from the third to Saturday, March fifteenth, from nine to noon. That's going to take place at War Hill High School. Uh, there will be onsite interviews and conditional job offers made. Uh, and if, if it's something that as a board member you would like to stop by and say hello, I think that's certainly something that's welcomed. Also happening, uh, in the Department of Human Resources is what we are calling our Walk-In Wednesdays. This is really targeted towards our bus drivers, bus aides, custodial staff, and cafeteria workers. Uh, those folks interested in a job and any of those classification areas are able to walk right in with a job. The next one will be on Wednesday, the nineteenth of March, from two to four thirty P. M. here in Central Office. If you walk in with it, for an interview, might walk out with an actual job offer, so we hope folks will join us. And then the third thing I wanted to mention in terms of human resources and staffing and really trying to build our workforce is the idea of the Alternative Pathways to License Your Information Night. That's going to be hosted at Berkeley Middle School on the twentieth of March. Uh, you can earn a teaching license while working in a WJCC classroom, uh, in a fully reimbursable program. Six P. M. Thursday, March twentieth, at Berkeley Middle School. Additionally, in the month of March, it is disability, disability awareness month. Uh, if you decide that you want to join us at the job fair on the fifteenth, I might try to convince you to head over to Lafayette High School, also on the fifteenth, for our Family Festival Day, where we are working to celebrate being one together. Uh, lots of events occurring at Lafayette between ten A. M. and two P. M. This event is coordinated and sponsored with the Parent Resource Center and the Special Education Advisory Committee. Uh, and this actual flyer was designed by a student at Lafayette High School. So, two items perhaps for your calendar on the fifteenth of March. Last thing I wanted to mention, uh, this evening is the idea of elevating student voices. And to the degree that we are able to gather input and gather feedback from our students, uh, we are going to be spending time in each of our high schools and middle schools. High schools are March seventeenth, middle schools are March twenty-sixth, and we will be talking some with our students about, um, things like the course offerings that we provide, instructional design, the use of artificial intelligence, and then potentially some of the disconnects between safety and security perceptions that students and adults had and the survey for the strategic plan that we, um, used or took part in, in, uh, November. I did want the board to be aware that on April first, we will bring back information that we gathered from those Student Voices tours. But again, as I mentioned in my notes, uh, recently, if you're interested in listening in to some of those sessions, if you'd please let us know, we'd be happy to welcome you for that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kieber. Are there any, um, reports from board members, Mrs. Donner?
No, I just like to make a comment. I was at, I think when we were at the Virginia School Board Association Conference, one of the sessions I went to, they were talking about doing kind of what you've just described. They also talked about doing it with school board members as well, and basically almost doing like a mock school board meeting where we were there, or some subset of us were there, and the kids could come and ask questions and things like that. So, I think it'd just be, we have the opportunities for us to get in the schools and in front of the kids, um, might be cool to keep building on that.
Sounds like a neat idea.
Alright, and we will move on to our proposed agenda items. Item six point zero one, review, uh, the Special Education Annual Plan, and title six B, Flow Through Funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an annual presentation that is done, and this evening, our Director of Special Education, Brooke Cruz, will take the board through, uh, the spe- the local special education plan. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you.
Probably want to pull that mic down. There you go.
Perfect. Good evening, Chairwoman Ordago, members of the board, and Dr. Kieber. I appreciate the opportunity to present the Special Education Plan, Annual Plan, for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. This plan outlines our approach to providing high-quality special education services while ensuring compliance with state and federal regulations. On February twelfth, the Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC, reviewed the plan and expressed their support. While this plan reflects the minimum funding mandates, it is critical that we recognize the growing needs of our students with disabilities. We must ensure that every student has access to the resources, staffing, and support necessary for closing the achievement gap and meeting the intensive needs of our most vulnerable students. This evening, I will highlight the key components of the plan, including funding, staffing, and strategic initiatives. The Special Education Annual Plan is a formal agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education. This plan is essential because it enables us to receive federal funding to support students with disabilities. Every component of this plan must be approved before funds are allocated, and those funds must be used exclusively for special education services and personnel. Our goal is to ensure that every student with disabilities receives the support they need to succeed in their educational journey. Special education funding comes from two separate federal funding streams. IDA Part B six eleven funding, which is designated for school-aged students with disabilities, and IDA Part B six nineteen funding, which supports preschool students with disabilities. These funds are distributed based on a formula, and while we have an estimated budget, the new allocations have not yet been released by the state. We do anticipate receiving updated figures soon. For the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, our plan for the use of federal funding remains consistent with the prior year's framework. The IDA Part B six eleven funds total two million four hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, and will cover the salaries and benefits of twenty special education teachers, sorry, sixteen special education teachers, four SLPs, six special education assistants, and a half-time parent resource coordinator. Our IDA Part B six nineteen funds totaling thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars will contribute to the salary of one special education teacher in our Bright Beginnings preschool program. These funds are critical to maintaining high-quality instruction and support services for our students with disabilities. It is important to note that with the rise in salaries and healthcare costs, when compared to IDA Part B level funding, we will not be able to fund as many positions. To remain compliant with state and federal regulations, our plan includes several required components. These include the superintendent certification, policy statements and assurances, special education services for students in local and regional jails, reports on how we implemented last year's plan, maintenance of effort and eligibility requirements, coordinated early intervening services and proportionate set-aside, and the application for use of federal funds for Section IDA Part B six eleven and six nineteen. Looking at two thousand and twenty-three and twenty-four, we, we successfully allocated all federal funds to support the salaries and benefits of special education personnel. By doing so, we met the minimum funding requirements for our students with disabilities. WJCC cannot report on the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five implementation of the plan until this year has come to an end. That report will be included in next year's annual plan presentation. Our district remains committed to the core principles outlined in our Statement of Insurances. These include ensuring a free, appropriate public education is available to all students with disabilities, maintaining individualized education programs, IEPs, for eligible students, educating students with disabilities alongside their non-disabled peers whenever possible, and implementing policies that prevent inappropriate identification or disproportionate representation of students with disabilities. This chart presents a comprehensive view of our special education expenditures from two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four. It highlights the financial commitment from federal, state, and local sources to support students with disabilities. The increasing trend in total expenditures reflects our ongoing investment in maintaining and serving the increasing needs of our students as they evolve. Growth in the total special education expenditures. Over the five-year period, total spending has consistently increased in correlation with the increase of salaries and benefits and increased complex needs of our most vulnerable students with disabilities. Contract services for speech, OT, and psychologists, self-contained paraprofessionals, one-to-one paraprofessionals, instructional paraprofessionals, reading and math-adapted instructional programming, assistive technology, early intervention for bright beginnings, child find, private day and public alternative placements, and home base due to private day and public alternative placements. The most significant increase can be observed between two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. Breakdown, um, breakdown of funding sources. Local funding is the purple bar segment, which is approximately seventy percent. State funding is the dark, let's see here, real quick.
Blue.
Yes. State funding is the dark blue bar segment, which is approximately twenty-one percent. And federal funding is the green bar segment, which is approximately nine percent. For fiscal year twenty-four, the amount of state and federal funding was eight million, and local funding was eighteen point seven million. This table provides an overview of our special education student population as reported on our September thirtieth Fall Student Record Collection and December one Child Count Report, categorized by age group. It highlights the number of students enrolled in early childhood programs versus K through twelve and the corresponding percentage of total enrollment in each group. The Early Childhood Special Education Bright Beginnings Program serves two hundred and eight students, making up fifty-six point four percent of the total special education enrollment in this category. The high percentage suggests a strong emphasis on early intervention, which is critical in supporting developmental needs at an early stage. The K through twelve special education program serves one thousand eight hundred ninety-one students, accounting for sixteen point four percent of total enrollment in this category. As part of our compliance obligations, we must demonstrate maintenance of effort, or MOE. This means that we are required to spend at least the same amount of local or local plus state funds on special education as we did in the previous year. To ensure compliance, we will use four key financial tests. Total local funds, this test checks if the total amount of local funds spent on special education is at least the same as the previous year. Total state and local funds, this test looks at the combined total of state and local funds spent on special education, ensuring it hasn't decreased from the previous year. Per capita local funds, this test calculates the amount of local funds spent per student with a disability and compares it to the previous year to ensure it hasn't dropped. Per capita state and local funds, similar to the third test, this one calculates the combined state and local funds spent per student with a disability and checks it against the previous year's amount. WJCC presently passes the four key financial test. This requirement helps maintain financial stability for special education services, ensuring that funding is not reduced over time. Highlighted here is a year-over-year comparison of our maintenance of effort, funding between twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five school years. It highlights the projected increases in both total and per-student funding for special education services. We project a local funding increase of one million seven hundred and eighty-six thousand and sixty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. We project a local state, local and state funding increase of two million six hundred and sixty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-three cents. We project a local per capita, students with disabilities, the per-student local funding increase of seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Similarly, we project a local and state per capita student with disabilities increase of one thousand two hundred and three dollars and two cents. These projected increases demonstrate our dedication to maintaining and expanding support for students with disabilities. By ensuring that our funding grows alongside student needs, we remain compliant with MOE requirements and continue providing high-quality education services. Projected maintenance of effort requirements for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. Looking at the breakdown, the local contribution for MOE is twenty-three million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents. The combined local and state funding amounts to twenty-nine million nine hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty cents. On a per-student basis, the local per capita amount for students with disabilities is eleven thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Similarly, when combining local and state funding, the per capita amount for students with disabilities increases to fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. By maintaining or exceeding these levels of funding, we ensure compliance with federal regulations while continuing to meet the needs of students with disabilities. Failure to meet MOE requirements could result in a loss of federal funding, which is why these numbers are closely monitored and maintained. Coordinated Early Intervening Services, or CIS, requires WJCC to allocate fifteen percent of federal funds to support early intervention services. These services are designed to help students who are not currently identified as needing special education but who require additional academic or behavioral support to succeed. Proportional set-aside, or PSA, this requires WJCC to allocate a specific portion of federal funds to provide special education and related services for children with disabilities who are parentally placed in private schools or homeschooled. For this year, we have one hundred and nineteen students who qualify under PSA, each receiving an average allocation of one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars eighty-nine cents. The total funding set-aside for these services is one hundred twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-two cents. These allocations ensure that we are meeting both federal requirements and the needs of our students. We continue to work closely with families and private institutions to make sure these services are accessible and effective. Looking ahead, our annual plan must be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by May ninth, two thousand twenty-five. This is a critical deadline to ensure timely approval and funding allocation. In terms of funding dispersment, federal funds are released in two phases. July one, two thousand twenty-five, we will receive twenty-nine point eight percent of our allocated funds. October first, two thousand twenty-five, the remaining seventy point two percent will be dispersed. This schedule ensures that we have the necessary resources in place to support special education services at the start of the school year and throughout its duration. We look forward to your favorable approval on March eighteenth. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Uh, Mrs. Donner?
So first, um, thank you so much. For the students that are either like home schooled or, um, in a kind of a private placement, how are those funds, like, the allocated funds that we set aside, like, how are those dispersed, or how do those students get those services?
So, we offer them an ISP, which is a equitable version of an IEP. It's not a full IEP. And so, we do offer direct speech services or academic consultation.
That they would, we would send someone to their home or to their school, or how does?
So, right now, we deliver virtual services to those locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hunley?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is a school board question or not, but I know we do an awesome job with special ed, and I was wondering, do, um, families move here? Like, is there a trend that families are moving here because of our services? And does the state take that into account? Because I know, even as a teacher, um, after their three-year, um, annual look at their IEP, some kids exit off. So, I was curious. We lose children, which is a good thing when they don't need the services. But then, how many are we picking up possibly from other divisions? So, is there a trend? And I know that, like I said, that's probably a school board question, but do you have a feeling for, are these just our children, or is this from people moving into Williamsburg?
So, I would say we do have probably, it's very equitable for the number who leave, who move, or exit out, and who come in. But I will say, this is my first year in this role, and I have fielded probably eight specific phone calls of families outside of Virginia who are inquiring in this area before they move to make a decision about moving. So, I think that's a really good thing. Um, but I will tell you, your December one child count, or our December one child count, that is how the state formulates how much they give, and it's based on the number of students. So, if it goes up, they give us more. If it goes down, it usually stays about the same or a little less. But we have continued to go up each year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that a question, Mr. Riffle?
This is an annual budget, so they don't go off the biennial. They don't take like, they take maybe, this is, I've got more of a strategic question, I guess. Like, when we talk about this fund, uh, they don't take away from us. Maybe it's going to base it off the last year and then see if you've increased it all, right? It's not like...
So, this is for the federal, um, funding. And so, as you see, it is increasing year to year, but it's minimal. It's not a huge increase.
But it's not a biennial. It's not like based off every two, they allocate this for two years. This is a one-year review every year that we give to the state to receive these types of funds.
Are you saying, does the state review annually? Is that, I'm sorry?
We're reviewing annually. I mean, I guess I'm just saying, like, this is something we do annually to ensure that we get equitable service for our students, right?
Yes, so annually, we report to them that we are adhering to everything that they have required, and as long as we meet those requirements, then they continue funding.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Can we go back to the, the MOE slides? Oh, I can't even find it. Um, I understand, I understand the concept of not, of wanting to ma- make sure we're not slowly pulling back, um, and cutting probably local dollars or spending less per capita. But did I understand correctly that we're required to increase every year based on the previous year?
So, you're not required to increase, but if your number of students go up, then yes, you are going to increase. And our students do go up each year.
Okay.
So, we are required to match that.
Right. If for some reason the number of students were to go down, w- would we be, still have to maintain, or?
So, no, those things will be taken into account. And so, then our finance department helps us calculate that. calculate that through certain formulas and then it's adjusted.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Is that it from the board? Thank you. Item six point zero two, review amendment to the F Y twenty-five grants fund budget.
Ms. Ewing will talk us through this particular agenda item.
Thank you, Dr. Kever. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This agenda item for your consideration is to amend our grants fund budget to reflect an additional grant that we have received in the amount of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars for a school improvement grant awarded to James Blair Middle School through the Virginia Department of Education's Office of School Quality to support identified schools. The grant is awarded through a competitive program and funding is allocated to provide resources and support implementation of sustainable strategic improvement strategies focused on substantially raising student achievement. With the addition of this grant, our new grants fund budget will total eight million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seven dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? We'll move on to item six point zero three, review of the right-of-way agreement and request for an easement.
Mr. Snipes?
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members and Dr. Kever. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports Elevate twenty-eight key priority organization and efficiency and is being brought for your consideration is the review of the right-of-way agreement and request for granting a permanent easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus to Verizon Virginia LLC. For and in consideration of one dollar paid to W J C C, the easement allows Verizon to access school property to provide service upgrades and maintenance of the service lines. And it's done, uh, again, it will be done at, uh, Clarver Baker Elementary School South Campus and that's fully described in plat number two-eight dash two-four zero-one zero-eight. Again, this is at no cost to the school division, um, the right-of-way agreement. And the acting superintendent recommends that the school board review the right-of-way agreement and request for a permanent easement at the Bright Beginning South Campus to Verizon Virginia LLC and be prepared to vote at the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Um, this is essentially an existing Verizon hub, more or less, that it, that's on the property or adjacent property that we're cordoning off and allowing.
Yeah, I think the, the best way to describe it is we need to provide access to Verizon to be able to potentially repair a duck bank that runs off, from off-campus or off-property onto campus. And one of the concerns as we begin the process of building permits and site plans is how do we help protect that, that area so as not to create a, a major malfunction or disruption to Verizon services. And, and one of the ways to provide access for repair is to dedicate the easement.
Okay. Any questions? All right. And we will move on to six point zero four, review purchase request for playground upgrades at various elementary schools.
Again, thank you for your attention tonight. The review, uh, purchase request for the playground upgrades at Laurel Lane, Matthew Waley, Matoka, Norwich and Stonehouse Elementary Schools also supports Elevate twenty-eight key priority of organization and efficiency. Funding for the project was approved in the F Y twenty-five C I P in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. And there is a balance of a hundred thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars remaining in the F Y twenty-three, twenty-four C I P. Williamsburg James City County has worked with Bliss Products under P C A contract number O D dash three-one-five dash two-zero to, and they will be replacing two aging and resting playgrounds at Laurel Lane with new playgrounds at Laurel Lane, including a rubberized surfacing and accessible play features. This will be the first of many projects that will include Universal Playground in our school division at Laurel Lane. This project will also replace aging swings at Matoka and Matthew Waley, installing a sand table at Norwich and Matthew Waley, installing new swings at Stonehouse. The final vendor quotation will be included at the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, uh, school board meeting. And the acting superintendent recommends that the board review the project information and be prepared to vote at that March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Are there any questions from the board?
Does universal mean like different types of students with different disabilities can use it? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Could you speak to, um, we're not required by law to do those type of things, right?
No, we are not. However, after many discussions with our, our C A C, uh, committee and others in our school division that are supporting our students with special needs, um, we wanted to make sure that this was accessible, not only for our students, but the community after hours.
Thank you, Mrs. Snipes.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to six point zero five, review R F P for, uh, healthcare coverage, looks like.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're gonna ask Ms. Ewing to talk through the request for proposal particulars. We are just about at the end of that process and wanted to, to have this in front of the board this evening uh, with a goal potentially on the eighteenth of March to empower the board to, to make a determination. Renee?
Thank you, Dr. Kever. This agenda item for your consideration is a review of request for proposal twenty twenty-five, zero-two-six-four for health, pharmacy, vision, E A P and dental coverage for the division. The division issued a request for proposal on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four with responses due back on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seeking proposals from offers which would best, best meet the me, the needs of the school division. One component of the review process was receiving our renewal information from our current provider, the Local Choice, which we will share more information on during the budget discussion this evening. Once the evaluation committee has completed their process, we anticipate coming back to the board at a subsequent meeting for an award of contract or to renew with the Local Choice. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We don't have any numbers to talk about yet.
During the budget discussion, we'll share information related to the Local Choice renewal with the board. But the committee is still under their evaluation process and so our hope is at the March eighteenth meeting to come back and ask for an award of contract or renew with the Local Choice.
Okay.
Can we ask for like, I can, we'll have a side-by-side comparison between the two at that point?
Most likely though, yes, there will be a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
I would also re- refer the board back to some of the information that was provided through U S I. And I, I believe that was the second meeting or first meeting in January, budget work session?
It was the second one.
Second, the budget work session, second, the second meeting in January, budget work session. Uh, our consultant from U S I gave a, a fairly specific overview in terms of some of the nuances related to, to the insurance component. I think from the outset, our goal has been to find an insurance option for our employees that is financially accessible and at the same time, organizationally look to find something that is financially accessible. And the process has taken a significant amount of time, but I also feel like as an organization, we've done our due diligence around vetting the proposals, looking specifically at numbers. And the one component that I think is probably worth mentioning is that based on our plan year as an organization, our plan year runs October one through September thirty. And as you are looking at other vendors to potentially meet your needs and you're doing that in the, in the early fall and they are looking at your claims data, there, sometimes there's incomplete information because we are in the early stages of a particular plan year. So that is, I think, contributed in some ways to, uh, the process drifting into February and March. We, we want to make sure that we have, uh, very specific and accurate data to provide to the R F P committee and then subsequently to recommend back to the board.
And I'll mention at this juncture that initially we were going to be approving the, the budget next, at the next meeting on the eighteenth and we've actually scheduled a special session for the March twenty-fifth to, to do that final approval because of this delay. So if anyone's thinking we're gonna see healthcare numbers for the first time at the next meeting and then have to vote the same night, that's not what's happening. We'll be voting, um, we'll be g- giving our final approval on the twenty-fifth. Um, okay. Is that it for this one? And then item six point zero six, uh, review request for proposal for, um, redistricting services.
Ms. Wall will talk to us a little bit about the R F P related to that and happy to answer any questions.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Kever. Item six point zero six is a placeholder item for R F P twenty twenty-five, zero-four, zero-four, school division redistricting services. A request for proposal was issued on December eleventh, twenty twenty-four with a due date of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five for a firm to support the school board and administration in redistricting or rezoning. As we reviewed in previous meetings, eight of nine W J C C elementary schools have portable classrooms or trailers onsite to accommodate student population. Separately, we anticipate our two new pre-K spaces opening in August, twenty twenty-six. Our current pre-K program, which is housed in five elementary schools, will be shifted to those two new sites. The shift will leave some elementary spaces unoccupied while other spaces remain at or over capacity. Concurrently, we have opportunities for transportation efficiencies when looking at attendance zones across the school division. As this is a placeholder item, we ask the school board to be prepared to award a contract uh, upon receiving the committee's final evaluation and recommendation at a future meeting.
Happy to answer questions.
Any questions, board members?
August twenty, August twenty twenty-six is when we said the pre-K was supposed to be open. I thought it was later than that.
Our, our goal is for an August twenty-six opening.
Really? Okay.
Is this still, um, is the, is the committee going to decide if we have all, all tiers of school redistricted or just?
That would be at the board's discretion.
So this is a proposal that will provide quotes for all?
The firms responded, yes, uh, with all three options, elementary, elementary and middle, elementary, middle and high.
And that's what we'll see when we get it. Okay.
And we'll bring you that recommendation.
Okay. Mr. Hosey?
How many responses did you get for this?
I'm not sure we can disclose that in the, because we're still going through the R F P process. I think, I think we need to be, we can disclose that at this point.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Information and discussion items. Item seven point zero one, school performance and support framework.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the accreditation model for the Commonwealth of Virginia has undergone some changes and some different iterations. And as that model has evolved in the last year, I, I think it's important for the board to have a firm understanding of what that framework looks like. Uh, because the, the look and feel of that framework will be different when we are sharing results with the board in the fall of next school year. Uh, and just an additional aside, the, the testing window that opens this spring and the results of the testing this year will then generate the accreditation rating for next year. So we, we're under a current accreditation model. We're fully accredited and we talked about that and have celebrated that. I think it's important for the board to be aware that that model is changing. The testing this spring will dictate our placement in that model. And Mr. Walker will walk us through, pardon the pun, but will take us through the, the different stages of what that accreditation model will look like. Sean?
Okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Kever. As a follow-up to the two-by-one meetings held with you back in November, this presentation will share additional information about Virginia's new accountability and support framework model. During the summer of twenty twenty-two, the Virginia Department of Education set out on a two-year journey to revamp the current school accreditation system. There was an overarching desire to combine the two systems of accountability, which frankly had numerous requirements, layers, differences, et cetera, into one new, more transparent system, braiding together all of the state and federal requirements. So knowing these changes were coming for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the Department of School Leadership provided an overview training during the summer for school leaders, followed by a more in-depth training at the November Leadership and Learning Session, which was for all division leaders and school leaders again. Additional individualized meetings have taken place at schools by request of the school principal. Before moving forward, it's important that we take a look in the rearview mirror first. The previous accreditation system has performance levels that are color-coded green, yellow or red, indicating each school's performance level. All schools strive for level one green status, indicating achievement is at or above the proficiency standard. There are six school quality indicators for elementary and middle schools which come from the student's performance on the English reading, math and science S O L test, gap group performance for English reading and math, and the chronic absenteeism rates. The high schools have additional indicators, those same six plus three more for graduation, dropout rates and the college career and civic readiness index. So combining all of those indicators together produces an overall final rating for each school, fully accredited, accredited with conditions or accreditation denied. And currently in the state of Virginia for this school year, approximately eighty-eight percent or roughly fifteen hundred of all public schools in the state are rated accredited. And as a reminder, as Dr. Kever stated, all W J C C schools are fully accredited. In fact, ten of our sixteen schools are one hundred percent level one green status across all of those indicators. So as I said earlier, beginning in the summer of twenty twenty-two, followed by almost a year of thirty public hearings held across the state, gathering more than a thousand participants, as well as multiple rounds of public review and public comment periods, we now have the new approved Virginia School Performance and Support Framework, which is a model with weighted categories based on a one-hundred-point scale. Similar to the previous model, this new model also focuses on student proficiency in English reading, mathematics and science as measured by the S O L test and English learner progress. Similar to the previous model, the new model also recognizes the importance of student growth, student attendance, graduation and future-ready skills. Student subgroup performance is also included in the new model and it is aligned to the federal accountability requirements. However, one change, the N size or the number size of the student reporting subgroups has been reduced from thirty students to fifteen students. And instead of the schools earning a final rating of fully accredited or accredited with conditions or accreditation denied, the new model has four final performance level descriptors now known as distinguished, on-track, off-track or needs intensive support. Unlike the previous accreditation model, there are weighted components for each of the three school levels within this new accountability framework. You can see that the mastery components in dark blue are weighted more heavily across all three levels with some variation across the three school levels and it makes up the largest piece of the one-hundred-point model. Mastery at the elementary level is sixty-five percent, sixty percent for middle schools and fifty percent for the high schools. Additionally, elementary and middle schools include growth and readiness components. While high school has a readiness component too, it also has graduation as its third component in the framework. The indicators within the mastery component come from the student's performance on the English reading, mathematics and science S O L test and English learner progress at each level. Additionally, you can see variations in the weighted indicators ranging from fifteen percent at the high school level to twenty percent at the middle school level and twenty-two point five percent at the elementary level. Next, take a quick look at the orange-colored component labeled readiness and you will notice that all three levels have a focus on chronic absenteeism. The high schools also have additional indicators for graduation and the ready-for-life. The high schools also have additional indicators for graduation and the Ready for Life three E indicator, which is focused on enrollment, employment and enlistment. The next few slides will focus on better understanding that mastery component, since it accounts for sixty percent of the total calculations for middle schools in this example. So first notice there is now a new weighted point system for student performance on those SOL tests. Earning advanced proficiency is one point two five points. Earning proficient is one point, basic point seven five and below basic point five. So this example has one hundred middle schoolers, we could say it's grade six for reading. Each body in this pictogram represents ten students. We see four green bodies representing forty students. These students performed at the advanced level on the SOL test and received one point two five points each, equalling fifty points. Forty students performed at the proficient level on the SOL test, equalling forty points. Ten students performed at the basic level and ten were below basic, which totals one hundred points for this example. And for your awareness, basic and below basic are not proficient, those are fails. Now let's expand on the type of calculation in the previous slide. There we go. Again, we are still in the mastery component, so we have that same weighting being applied. Look at the table on the bottom left, representing the reading performance indicator of a sample middle school. You can see the number of students performing in each of the weighted levels for this school. One hundred fifty-nine students earned advanced proficient on the SOL reading test. Ninety-eight students earned proficient, one oh six earned basic, and sixty-eight students earned below basic for a total of four hundred thirty-one students. After multiplying the number of students at each performance level by the appropriate weight, the totals are then added to get three hundred ninety-three point two five. The percent of possible points is calculated by dividing those total points by the total number of students, which equals ninety-one point two four in this example. The total number of students, the total points and the percent of possible points are then used in the table on the right to calculate the index value for the reading performance indicator. The percent of possible points is multiplied by the weight for that indicator, and in this case it's twenty percent. So ninety-one point two four multiplied by twenty divided by a hundred gives you an eighteen point two five index value for the reading SOL performance indicator. And that looks slightly off on the screen up there. But that same calculation is performed for math, for the SOL test results, the science SOL test results and the English learner progress indicators by applying the appropriate weights. So this is what a completed table calculating a school's overall performance category will look like. We walked through calculating middle school reading performance. Other indicators, as I said, will have similar calculations to determine their index value, which are then added to get the performance category total in the upper left corner. This number determines whether a school is labeled distinguished, on-track, off-track or needs intensive supports. And in our example, this middle school has a performance category total of eighty-four point six six two. This equates to being on-track. So to provide some additional context and clarity, the state has used last year's spring two thousand and twenty four SOL student data to show all Virginia school divisions what their outcomes might look like in the new accountability model. The distinguished performance category means a school earned ninety points or higher out of a hundred points and is exceeding the state's expectations for mastery, for growth and for readiness. One WJCC school would fall into the distinguished category. The on-track performance category means a school earned between eighty to eighty-nine total points out of one hundred and is meeting the state's expectations for mastery, growth and readiness. Twelve of our schools would be considered on-track. The off-track performance category means a school earned between sixty-five to seventy-nine points out of one hundred and is not meeting the state's expectation for mastery, growth and/or readiness. Three WJCC schools fell into this category. One school actually earned eighty-three points in being on-track. However, they had their category lowered down one level for failing to meet the proficiency benchmarks for certain student subgroups. Two other schools barely missed the on-track performance category by one and a half points. None of our schools fell into that final category needs intensive supports. So there are approximately seventeen hundred public schools across our state, serving about one point two six million students. And using the two thousand and twenty four SOL results in the new model, sixty-five percent or one thousand one hundred and fifteen Virginia public schools would earn the top two performance categories, on-track or distinguished, which is considerably lower than the current eighty-eight percent of all Virginia schools being fully accredited per the previous accreditation model. And in WJCC, thirteen out of our sixteen schools are eighty-one percent would earn the on-track or distinguished performance category designation, which is lower than our current status of one hundred percent of schools being fully accredited by the previous model. This slide is specific to our high schools only and the three E readiness indicator, which focuses on students graduating high school ready for college enrollment, employment and/or enlistment and is twenty-five percent of the orange readiness component. Based on student performance, schools will receive weighted points within all of the three Es. By students' enrollment in college-level coursework like AP and dual enrollment courses, earning an associate's degree or earning a three or higher on an AP exam, by being employable by their completion of CTE sequences and state-approved industry credentials and/or participating in work-based learning, and by students' enlistment potential based on their military ASVAB scores. And that stands for the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Assessment. These data are calculated based on the senior cohort of students each year. One indicator in the readiness component of the new accountability framework underscores the importance of being college-ready and every student having access to rigorous coursework. Students can earn various points to be used in the indicator's calculation depending on the number of college-ready experiences they have. These experiences include receiving passing scores on AP exams, participating in dual credit courses and earning a grade of C or higher. A student having three or more of these experiences, which may include a score of three or higher on one or more AP exams or earning a grade of B or higher in a dual credit course, contributes one point to the school's Ready for Life indicator. Partial points can be earned by students meeting slightly lower criteria, such as a lower number of college-ready experiences and/or grades in those recognized courses. It's important to note that students taking AP courses but not sitting for the AP exam may be leaving accountability points on the table, which could be counted in the school's overall score in the new framework. This may negatively impact a school's final score and performance category ranking. This is why we feel it's essential to consider requiring those students who are enrolled in AP courses to take the applicable AP exam and why you'll see the budget implications in the proposed operating budget for next year. So you may be wondering if we're ready for this new state accountability framework, and the answer is yes. Our Division Strategic Plan Elevated to Twenty-Eight provides a clear roadmap focused on the key priority of academic achievement, college and career readiness and educational equity. All sixteen schools develop an annual school improvement plan unique to their students' data with related goals on reaching and/or exceeding the benchmarks for literacy, math, science, student attendance, graduation and life readiness, which ensures we continue doing the work that the new Virginia Accountability Framework measures. And at the school level, our school leaders, our phenomenal teachers, our specialists, our interventionists, our tutors, our support staff, they're all championing the success of every student, analyzing those multiple data points, monitoring student progress and responding to the data to inform instructional planning and teaching. So in closing, our strategic plan and our vision stated perfectly, we are pursuing excellence for every student so they may reach their greatest academic potential. Madam Chair, that concludes the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. It was a lot to digest. Um, are there any questions from the board at this time?
I, I have probably one question and two comments. First of all, I didn't like that they say denied instead of not accredited, accreditation denied. That's just, it's kind of harsh, but anyway, that's not your fault. Um, what are we gonna do, um, we're, we're ready, as you said, for parents that want to exempt their children from the SOL? Is that still gonna be a fail for that child? And how are we gonna encourage parents to have them take the SOLs if it's gonna count as a fail for us?
We do cover that every year when the school sends out the parent letter to the parents um, in advance of the SOL tests that are coming up and they'll lay out. Each school will lay out their testing schedule and encouraging parents to have their children participate. And we, every year, have a handful of students who don't take the exam per their parent request and it does, it counts as a fail.
And then my other comment that I didn't quite understand, I, I see the points for post-secondary, but a lot of it says college, college readiness, and I know we talked a little bit about vocational, but we're trying to encourage children to go into the vocational setting and yet this doesn't seem to give them any credit for even wanting to go that route. So to me, that, it's not a question, it's just a comment.
Actually, it does. The, um, one of the three Es, the employment, enlistment, enrollment, um, cap- captures the CTE piece and capturing the, uh, industry credentials.
So that's in this?
It's in that three E indicator piece of it, yes ma'am.
So we were showing you specifically the enrollment piece because of our conversation around AP exams and the, and the need to potentially fund AP exams. There, there are two other Es that Mr. Walker didn't do a deep dive on for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I have a few, while board members are still thinking. Back to AP, since we just mentioned that. And if this was said and I didn't catch it, forgive me. Is it better, would it, under this new framework, would it be better for a student, say, to, would it look from an accreditation standpoint better for a student to not take an AP class at all rather than take it and not take the exam? We get, you know what I'm saying, Dick, do we get points for how many kids take the class or do we only get points for the exam?
They can get points, partial points for also taking the AP class and earning a B or higher in that class. So they may do that and then choose not to sit for the exam, so they're still getting some points on it. They're leaving some points sitting on the table, though.
Okay. And then is this, I guess the takeaway overall would be just by looking at the percentages of schools that, that would be in the top two categories versus are currently accredited, that this is a more stringent system?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and is that overall, even though that provides some additional work, is that seen as overall positive?
I think it does not change the work that we're doing and our focus across the division with literacy and math and science and producing proficient and advanced proficient students in those areas. We've always had that focus. Um, I think it helps to narrow some of our work with the high school pieces around the three E framework. Um, that's a bit, it's almost like the previous, in the previous accreditation model, that was known as the College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator to the CCCRI, um, which captured some of that information on AP, CTE completers, uh, dual enrollment. It's almost like the three E is on steroids, so to speak.
I also think that accountability-wise, administrators, we, we all believe in accountability and we think accountability is important. I, I think the challenge for school divisions in this revised framework was the pace and the idea that some components of the framework are continuing to be fleshed out. For instance, a work-based learning piece was just, um, approved, I believe, last week by the State Board of Education. So the, the decisions and the testing that's occurring this spring will determine accreditation ratings for next school year. And initially, I think superintendents and, and school division leaders felt like if you give us an additional year to prepare for it, uh, still hold us accountable, uh, we would feel much better about the accreditation model.
But even so, then that would mean, say, you have a, a dip for the first year, but we feel like by the second year, it should be where we'd wanna be.
Right, I, I, I think ultimately we do, we don't wanna dip in year one. I mean, so ideally, we wouldn't have a dip in year one, but as Mr. Walker shared, last year's results in the new framework would suggest that we had a couple of schools that didn't quite make the on-track or distinguished category, which in some cases changes people's perceptions of schools within school divisions.
You asked a good question, but I wasn't sure of this answer. How many times can a child take the AP exam? So let's say someone has four AP classes and they take all four and they failed one. Can they retake the one or that's it, once you take it, that's, it's, you're done?
I can't answer that.
The, the answer is you, you take the AP exam one time for the course. It's, it's not a multiple test opportunity.
Okay. And I don't wanna hog all the questions, so I'm looking around, but, um, is, for me to tell on, with these charts, is the chronic absenteeism weighted more or less than what, how it's currently weighted?
Chronic absenteeism right now, it's just, it's simply one of the six indicators for elementary and middle and one of the nine for the high schools. There's no weighting at all on the previous accreditation model. Now it's weighted ten percent or ten percent of that total pie. Uh, for elementary. Middle school, I think this first year has five percent for chronic absenteeism and five percent for access to advanced coursework in mathematics. And the high schools, I believe, chronic absenteeism's at five percent. Year one.
This one says five for all the schools.
That's because in the orange component, the readiness for year one, because this was operating at, um, a warp speed, as Dr. Kiefer explained, coming down, uh, from the state. There's an additional indicator, for example, in the elementary talking about the five Cs performance task. So it's meant to be chronic absenteeism, five percent performance on that five Cs task, five percent together equalling ten percent. That task is not developed yet, it's not being rolled out, so in year one for elementary.
It's all it is.
Chronic absenteeism will be ten percent.
So that will actually make it way more moving forward? Okay. I feel, I mean, again, this isn't for us, 'cause it's not from us, but I feel like chronic absenteeism is, is important to focus on, but sh- because that has a direct impact on everything else, it shouldn't be its own additional category that weighs that much, but it's not up to us.
I'm pretty sure that was described in the superintendent's and School Board Association's letter of saying like, the state's pushed so much for this absenteeism to be such a big block of the governor's plan for education that they should be giving us more weight for those reasons, so. Um, I, I, I don't know if it's set in stone yet, but clearly it's still developing, but I, I think it's similarly shared across the General Assembly and the other associations that involve education and the stakeholders of the. The other associations that involve education and the stakeholders of this, so I think it could still change, but. It was a little sad to see.
Okay, any other questions before we move on?
I will mention that in the liaison meeting, there was a desire from some of the participants there to have a. Thirty thousand foot view of the new accreditation framework. So one of. The pieces that we will do administratively during our joint meeting on March fourteenth is to try to provide some overarching comments on how the accreditation. Framework may look in the coming year versus what we've shared with the joint meeting in December of the year. So that'll that'll be a component of the joint meeting on the fourteenth of March.
Last question is to make, when we consider redistricting, I guess for elementary level, like. I guess we'll be using this new accreditation model, which is something I think we should consider when we talk about the RFPs and things like that. How how is that gonna look for us? Cuz we're looking at students' performance, you know, based off demographics and GIS and all that. Fun stuff we get to do in a minute. It's just like, I I think it's a little hard for us to do that properly without understanding the full model. But like, where our stools stand now and if we start changing some of the numbers, you know, based off who's gonna be attending them and and such, or does that make sense?
I think I understand what you're asking and what I would point to is when. When we get a vendor on board to to help us with the redistricting scenario, the school board can help guide the. Primary criteria by which the zone and the lines of the zones might be drawn. And and maybe it's, um, maybe it's done by factor A or factor B or factor C or a combination of all factors. So it's uh, demographic, it's housing starts within a particular neighborhood, it's trying to create neighborhood schools, it's looking at. Free and reduced lunch populations and some of those kinds of scenarios. So I think that the board would have a chance to guide. Guide the work of the contractor around as you build out these zones, we want you to take into consideration these seven factors. Uh, so if if for some reason academic achievement were a primary piece that the board wanted to have. Counted for, we would need to look to be able to try to provide data to the to the contractor. Does that make sense?
I that's kind of what I'm asking is like, I think we kind of, gonna feel this kind of hit with how we changed even even this, like this, you know. Elementary is sixty-five percent mastery, right? Like, it's a it's a pretty big part of their ability to say they're academically inclined and then. If we're gonna change certain scores, some schools will get a larger percentage while others will be removing a percentage, right? So I I just wanna mention that now if we're talking about a developing model that also involves a developing model that. Are all kind of nuanced numbers until they're actually set into a motion with kids on buses and coming to school for a full year, so. Yeah, thank you, Dr. Kever, appreciate it.
We will move on to, I just opened it and I lost the number.
Seven point zero two?
Yeah, seven point zero two fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a an additional conversation for the school board around the operating budget. On our, in our meeting on February eighteenth, we presented a an operating budget that we call the superintendent's recommended budget. Uh, we shared with our funding partners through the liaison meeting on Friday. Uh, some additional perspective around the requests in terms of what we have affectionately referred to as the four buckets. And we'll spend some time this evening, uh, kind of re-looking at what those buckets are and where some of those positions have been placed. Additionally, we, um, based on the renewal information that we received from uh, the local choice or as we call it TLC. Have provided for us, we wanna give you uh, some hypothetical insurance scenarios. Based on the rate that we receive from the local choice so that you can have that in your in your thought process. And as we get to the end of the presentation, we might ask the board uh, for some next steps in terms of direction as we gear up for. Our joint meeting on the fourteenth and then an additional conversation on the eighteenth whereby we hope we can provide you some. Some real specificity around the operating budget to set you up in 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 a good way for the vote on the twenty-fifth. Ms. Ewing, could you take us through the presentation, please?
I have to read my disclosure.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
As a member of the school board of W, um, Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the. Fiscal year twenty-six school budget because my husband's an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate. In the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Alright, thank you. Uh, good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Dr. Kever shared, this evening, we will be reviewing the proposed budget. By major category, which will include mandatory increases, compensation, positions and other increases. For the school-based positions, we will share the anticipated school assignment and we also have healthcare information to share related to our renewal from the local choice. Our state revenue in the proposed budget is based on Governor Youngkin's proposed amendments to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six. State budget and is estimated to go up by approximately two point four million. The General Assembly has approved a budget which includes funding to fully eliminate the cap on funded support positions. Additionally, funds are included to establish an add-on payment to basic aid for special education students. The estimated funding impact of these items could potentially be an increase of approximately one point nine million. This estimate is from the state utilizing their projected enrollment for each locality. Until an official cap tool is released, we will not know the actual impact of these changes to our revenue. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately two point four million to our expenditure adjustments. Of sixteen point three million, the difference is thirteen point nine million, which becomes our request to our funding partners. This amount represents a twelve point nine percent increase above our current fiscal year twenty-five appropriations from the localities. Any additional state revenue would decrease the request of localities. Utilizing the estimated additional state funding that I just shared would bring this amount down to approximately twelve million. We just do not know if the state budget will be finalized by the time the board needs to approve the budget later this month. There were additional budget requests submitted during this year's process but not included in the budget proposal. These included additional FTEs, stipend requests and contractual day changes for various positions. As well as years two and three of the Bolton Compensation Study. You will notice a new number here for years two and three of the Compensation Study. The information from Bolton was strictly for salary adjustments. We have added in the associated benefit costs, bringing that figure up to seven point one million. In total, about nine point six million in requests were identified as needs but not included in the budget proposal. Looking at the first category of expenditure adjustments, this includes those items that are considered mandatory. Which includes mandatory staffing requirements for leap teachers and special education teachers and aides. Funds to sustain the bus driver pay increase approved in January. Anticipated increases in New Horizons and Special Education Private Day Tuition. As well as utilities and increases for contractual commitments that we have. In total, these items amount to approximately three point three million and include fourteen point five FTEs. Looking at compensation-related items specifically, this includes a three percent salary increase for all staff. As well as targeted adjustments for the teacher and unified scales recommended by Bolton's Compensation Study. An increase in healthcare costs, which was based on a fifteen percent increase in sharing that on a seventy thirty split with the division. Taking on seventy percent of the increased cost. Additionally, funds are included to support the expanded summer school program that has been offered for several years. Which has been supported by grant funding that is no longer available. There are funds to provide training pay to new WJCC teachers prior to the start of their contract, stipend requests. As well as contractual day changes for several positions. In total, compensation-related items amount to approximately ten million. Ms. Carol will now share information related to the employee intent survey and healthcare renewal information from the local choice program.
Good evening. I just wanted to briefly touch on our intent survey responses for this year so you can see on the chart in front of you. We have received one thousand seven hundred thirty responses to our intent survey for the upcoming year. Out of these responses, eighty-five percent of the staff have indicated that they intend to return next school year. Another three point seven percent indicate an interest in transferring. Nine percent indicate they're uncertain about their plans for the next year and two point one percent indicate that they'll be resigning or retiring. In the upcoming year. So looking at last year, we had responses with very similar results. We did have a few more responses for a total of one thousand eight hundred seventy-three. But again, similar numbers, eighty-three percent indicating they were gonna stay. Three point two percent indicating transfer, nine point eight percent indicating they're under uncertain. And two point one percent indicating that they would resign or retire. So we're not seeing any numbers this year that look. Kind of out of whack with what we're seeing from year over year.
And before you go into the healthcare piece, Ms. Carol, can you talk a little bit about? When we hear back from staff about their uncertainty or their retiring or resigning, what is it that we do in order to try to? To better understand that?
So that, for the people that indicate they don't, they're not certain about what their plans are, we do have. A supervisor meets with every single one of those people that have responded that way to try and determine, is there something in the environment? Is there something we could do? Is there something we could help with? How could we encourage them to stay with the division? Um, in some cases, they indicate that they're not certain cuz they're really not intending to leave, but they like to keep their options open. Or they, you know, they just are not really clear on exactly what they might be doing next year. We do end up retaining most of those that indicate uncertain year over year, but we do do check-ins with them. Um, same with those who are indicating that they're resigning. Um, we, a supervisor will meet with it. With them and find out, is there anything that we could do? We wanna keep you, we appreciate you, we value you. How can we hold on to you next year? And we try and hold on as many as we can. Retirees are typically less so cuz when they've decided that they're gonna retire, they're pretty much made up their mind at that point. But we are able to lure some of them back to be substitutes or in critical shortage positions or long-term subs, so. We keep them engaged.
So this does pretty much come to fruition the way these numbers pan out, except for the uncertain.
The the uncertain category will typically move into the plan to return category, which I think then is. Part of the rationale for our ability on the instructional side to be ninety-nine point, whatever the percentage is staffed and then over ninety percent. Close to ninety-three percent on support staff. Uh, as we looked at this data, I think that we were generally encouraged. There there's not. A a great deal of uncertainty and it allows for supervisors, principals to meet directly with employees who indicate some level of uncertainty. So I I think we were pleased.
Does anyone, sorry, does anyone follow up with people who didn't respond at all?
We do, we do several passes. We we send out the initial survey and then we do, before the due date, we do a reminder and try and get everyone in. And then we end up sitting lists, we send out multiple actually passes to the supervisors and say, hey, here's the people we still haven't heard from. Can you encourage them to jump in and give us a response? And so they go out and try and get everybody that they can.
Yes, and I would assume that if there's three point eight that would like to transfer and they don't get their transfer request. Do they typically bump into uncertain or what have you found with people that don't get to go where they want?
You would typically see them just bump into stay cuz some people say. I put in for a transfer cuz my dream job might come open that I don't know about and I wanna be able to put in for the transfer, so I'm keeping my options open. Some people say, oh, I'm really interested in moving to a school, a different school cuz my child's gonna start and I'd like to be at that school. Um, so principals definitely try and work with transfers, but we do have a significant portion of transfers that. They put in just cuz they wanna, in case there's something that comes along that they aren't aware of at the time of the survey, they wanna keep their options open. So while we're, we are still under an active RFP process related to our healthcare, we have received the renewal information from TLC. And wanted to share what that looks like with the board. We are looking at an eight point nine percent increase if we stay with TLC, which amounts to a total increase of two point four million. And sharing that increase on a seventy thirty split with employees would mean an increase of approximately one point seven million. I do wanna mention while the overall increase in the TLC plans is eight point nine percent. The Centerra plan is increasing by twenty-one point three percent, so a significant bump came forward on that plan. As a reminder, WJCC contributes nine thousand three hundred thirty-six dollars annually for employee-only coverage. Fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars for employee plus spouse coverage. And twenty-two thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars for family coverage. So that amount would stay consistent regardless of the plan choice the employee selects. The employee annual amount varies based on the plan. And the blue bar on the graph indicates the cost of the Key Advantage two fifty plan. The lavender bar indicates the cost of Key Advantage five hundred and the orange bar indicates the cost for Centerra coverage. And that's with our current rate structure. We also have a spousal surcharge of seventy-five dollars a month and currently five hundred thirty-eight employees cover their spouses on our plan. So on the next slide, we're gonna show you what the annual increase in healthcare would cost as compared to a potential salary increase.
Let let's keep in mind that this is a hypothetical scenario. Based on our current renewal information from the local choice. On the Key Advantage five hundred plan with a three percent instructional raise. Or three percent employee raise. So we we know that there is a desire to have a sense of. Best case, worst case scenario and we're trying to provide that to you this evening. Ultimately, likely to give you a much uh, stronger, more specific. Set of numbers when we get together again on the eighteenth. Sorry, I'm like, go ahead.
Nope, that's good. So this is the comparison slide based on the current proposed budget. So we've incorporated for the teachers. Um, tried to incorporate some of the potential for the comp study recommendations and a three percent salary increase for the support person. Which in this scenario is a grade five example. And this is the healthcare shared seventy thirty with rates again, based on the Key Advantage five hundred plan. So the dark blue line indicates the best case scenario and the lighter blue line indicates the worst case scenario. Looking left from right, we're showing a master's lane teacher going from step zero to step one. A master's lane teacher moving from step fifteen to sixteen. A grade five support employee moving to a new possible minimum of fifteen fifty an hour. And a midpoint support employee on grade five receiving a three percent increase. So in this example, on the entry-level teacher, they may see a pay increase of two thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars. If this same employee selected employee-only coverage, the health insurance increase on Key Advantage five hundred would be two hundred and twenty-eight dollars annually. Above and beyond what they're paying this current year. So their net pay increase would be one thousand nine hundred forty dollars. If the same employee elected family coverage, the net increase could be one thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars. With the raise being again, two thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars. But the increase in their health coverage being a six hundred dollar increase over what they pay. So that. One thousand five hundred sixty-eight dollars represents the difference between their raise and the addition they would pay in their health insurance.
So for this year. Again, based on the limited numbers and the hypothetical we're dealing with. The employees with the raise and with the increase in the medical insurance, they are still. Gaining, um, in the long run. Last year, I believe there are some hypotheticals where even with the raise that the employees were getting. Because of the increase in the health insurance, they were losing money. So far in this hypothetical, employees are not losing any money with the health insurance increase.
That's correct. So this is, but this is only focused on the one Key Advantage five hundred plan. So if we bring back an array of plan options. That would have the potential to change what these numbers look like, but in this example, yes.
Mr. Riffle?
My question for Ms. Ewing, but um, this is probably because we've unified the scale to extend like. It created this balance that's like no longer seen between the disparities of the the different. Correct my wrong, but that's the point of the study and that's what we're trying to do here is like when we give raises, people actually can see them without. Much of a disadvantage when it comes to insurance.
I'm not sure that's necessarily related to the comp study. I think that that part of what. And and that we purposefully selected a grade five support staff member cuz that that right now is the lowest paid member of our team. Our, our focus to the best of our ability is to provide a raise for all of our employees at three percent or more. And then a healthcare coverage that meets each individual person's needs and what their family needs. And the challenge that we have in trying to provide aggregate data to the board is that. It varies person to person and scenario to scenario. I, I think we are encouraged right now in this hypothetical that everything is above the red line. And that red line being zero dollar net increase. So that, that is a plus right now and we hope when we come back to you on the eighteenth. To continue to see everything above said red line. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does. To an extent, I, I really wanna point to that. I think the work that's being done. Before we got to this slide is really a big part of why we were seeing some of these results is like when you. Encourage your system to make these kind of changes as an organization, like to unify your scale, to look for a three percent for everybody, right? Things you just mentioned.
Yes, sir.
Um, you, you kind of get to the point of like, these things get easier as we throughout time and that's what the study kind of told us. It's like, you make these choices now. As you get into year two, three, four, your staff and people will feel more relieved when you have these discussions instead of like. We're like waiting for a lower number, which we clearly got from fifty percent to eight point nine, but you know, I, I'm just trying to point out some things for the general public. If you're not keeping up at home, it's, it's a lot to kind of hold down, so.
I don't know that we can make projections in future, future year healthcare increases though.
Yeah, missing suggesting.
That might be a little.
Sure.
A little.
Well, if you're not doing all five steps or three steps for the study, so.
Uh, Dr. Renee. Yep, Ms. Ewing, I'm sorry. So this, this is the. This is our hypothetical on healthcare and we're gonna keep moving with the presentation if that's okay. Renee?
So moving on to the next category of expenditure requests, you will see here a compilation of the positions included in the proposed budget. Other than the mandatory ones for elite teachers and special education IEP related positions. They are separated into school-based staffing requests, which are at the top in the darker green. These include positions like classroom teachers, gifted and talented resource teachers, a counselor. Additional special education aides and elementary teacher assistants for behavior support. The next section represents positions that provide direct school support. These are positions that we recommend transitioning from grant funds into the operating fund next year. And includes speech language pathologists as well as the portion of the K-five literacy coordinator that is currently grant funded. The last section represents central support positions in human resources, finance and operations. In total, these position requests amount to approximately three point one million and include just under forty-nine FTEs. Looking at the school-based positions, we've provided a breakdown by school for where we currently anticipate the additional staff to be assigned. This chart shows the elementary schools. As an example, based on current English language learner population, we anticipate one leap teacher going to Claire Bird Baker. James River, Norwich and Laurel Lane and two assigned to Matthew Whaley. On the far right, you will see the total by elementary school of these positions.
And before Ms. Ewing shifts to the secondary example, I think it's important to note that. School security officers are on this chart. We have talked about adding them to the operating budget because we'll be moving into the last year of the grant. There are people in those positions right now. Uh, if we get to the point of needing to look at the budget differently. There are still people in those positions and we do have a, a match that needs to happen in order for us to qualify for that grant. So there is, there is some sort of pay-in for school security um just in general.
And, and just to clarify, the leap teachers are, are from the mandatory list, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's right.
And the behavior support, for example, are, are from the other, other portion.
That's right. So the, the behavior support assistants are in the, the other bucket of positions that we've talked about previously. And, and that particular. Resource allocation uh is one that we've heard is necessary from perspective of principals, from teachers. The idea that at the elementary level, forty-some percent of our behavioral referrals come from students in. Grades K and one have, have really put us in a position, organization to look at. Uh, very specific support model at the elementary level with this position.
Uh, Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I think this side of the next slide, would it be possible to get like a filled in chart of what is already? We already have as full-time employees. I think we have seen this in like multiple iterations. But I think like seeing it broken down this way for the board as we move into the eighteenth meeting would be very helpful.
Color, make a different color.
I was gonna say the same thing. Like the security, school security officers, we already have. So let's have that designated something. The leap teachers are gonna be a requirement for us, so I think that'd be something else. And then have everything else.
Yeah.
Just so we can see. Everything out there.
We've seen this in multiple formats throughout the questions we've asked, but I think this is the actually the cleanest way so far and.
We wanna, we wanna give you the information in a way. So the other, the other component to that is there, there was an SBQ maybe in early February. Where we were asked, how many of these people, how many of these FTEs are already tied up in people? Uh, that's in board docs for you right now, but in, in advance of the eighteenth, we will do some other cover, color coding. To help you see it more specifically.
Here on this slide, you'll see the anticipated allocation for the secondary schools. Again, as an example, the leap teachers would be assigned one each at Hornsby and Warhill and two at Berkeley. Staffing is monitored throughout the summer and assigned based on student population. And for secondary schools, staffing is also driven by course requests. So these are our anticipated school allocations, but that could change as we go through the summer. The last category of expenditure increases are those that do not fall into the previously shared categories. The main item in this category is three hundred forty thousand in funding to support paying AP exam fees for all students. Who enroll in AP courses. And lastly, the budget proposal does include seven hundred twenty thousand in reduction in savings. And that concludes our presentation and we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
All right, board members, over to you. The Riffle's got his hand up?
I really have a, a question. I just wanna say thank you for taking us through these steps. I think as we, every presentation we have, we get, kinda get more refined details. And it's easier to kind of explain what the number we're getting at and. I, I must appreciate the staff and I think, I think our, our parents and our own staff are encouraged by these type of presentations. As we take the process ever more seriously every time we meet, so, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone want to have a discussion?
Um, I don't have it in front of me, but we, um, I know we all got a email from someone that works directly with students. That take the AP exam and it made sense to me, but then also hearing about the new accreditation. And why it's important for them to take the AP exam. Now I'm back to, eh, I don't know if that figure. You know, so I'm back on the fence with that part, funding it all, but, because what, what. The uh staff member brought up made total sense to me, but I.
You said students take more ownership of the outcome that they're paying for.
But that's just hearing from one person um that's involved in that, so.
I, I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that philosophy. I, I think that when. When you as a school division or administratively mandate that. That students do something, I think you have to create an absolute pathway in order for that to occur. Uh, and I, so I'm, I'm appreciative of the teacher's feedback and understand that perspective. But I also feel like one of the things that, that we're bringing forward administratively is. We don't wanna leave any accreditation points on the table. We want our students to participate in advanced coursework, have that opportunity. So we wanna continue to encourage students to take AP and dual enrollment courses. And then provide a pathway to take that exam without any potential cost.
I have a question about that more. Um, if a student. So we're not, I mean, we're not forcing students to take AP classes. We're not requiring that everyone take the classes.
We, there, there's not a requirement to take an advanced placement course. If you, if you register for and take an advanced placement course, the expectation would be that you sit for the exam.
Sure. What happens if someone sits for the exam and scores very badly? Does that affect accreditation?
The way I, the way I see the, the point value is that if you sit for the exam, you get a point five. You don't sit for the exam, you don't get anything.
So if you got a one, you get a point five.
You get a point five towards accreditation.
And that's still better for us than.
Than a zero.
Okay, so we're not, because I don't wanna be paying for exams that then ding us.
Right, I, 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 I understand that.
A lot if.
I, I think that in. I, I think year one potentially looks different than years two, three and four. It used to be that we would, would pay for AP exams and that was the expectation. I think we would need to, to do some work. Um, this spring, summer into the opening of the school year, working with students and families around that expectation and helping. Helping everyone feel like there was a level of not only division accountability for paying for the exam, but then personal accountability to attempt your best.
But there is also, I assume some sort of waiver. I'm, I'm assuming if, if someone truly now can't af, can't afford it. We're not, not letting them take it, right?
That's right. That, that you, you can qualify to take the exam if you qualify for free and reduce lunch.
Uh, any other? Questions or comments from the board? Would a, does anyone have any thoughts in general since, you know, from over the last two months of? Listen, it is a, it's, you know, it's a big, it's a big number. So that's, it's a, you know, one of the biggest ones we've put forward um. So.
Bu- between now and the eighteenth, we. There is a presentation in there for the joint meeting uh on the fourteenth, but we hope to have a healthcare. Plan and number to bring forward, so if you were, if you were doing some math. During the presentation and you looked at the TLC renewal rate, you may have reduced the overall request by five hundred thousand, say. And then dependent upon what. Transpires in Richmond, there's an additional one point eight or one point nine in play. So that, that takes the number down closer maybe to eleven five. Uh, would it, would it help the board for us to look at? Additional ways to potentially save and bring forward that information on the eighteenth? I, I don't necessarily wanna ask for a specific number, but I can tell you that administratively, we will, we will look at everything. And, and scrub it back and try to come back with what we think is absolutely what's most impactful for the school division. And puts us in a position to stand in front of our funding partners in the community and say, this is, this is.
Really what.
This is what we absolutely need.
Um, Mr. Riffle?
Can I make a suggestion inside, inside that conversation? I think we, my thoughts always goes back to what we gave back in attrition for this stuff. If we can hit some type of number close to what we gave back, nothing, it'd be easier for us to, to talk about this as a, a board. I don't think we're too far off from that now. I think from what Richmond's doing and what could, we will not know by the eighteenth. I, I will tell you the truth, the governor won't, won't even know what he's doing until the twenty-fifth, because that's seven days before his vetoes are due, so. It's, we're not gonna be ready at that point, so I think the realistic part is like the House and Senate budgets are mostly gonna stay the same for education. Um, but you know, I think we're just gonna go off what you just said, not your keeper. I, I would suggest we maybe move towards what is as close as we can to what we gave back in attrition funding last year. Um, I think it's, I, I think what we have now is close enough. I, I don't feel like it needs to, but I think we should be prepared to a point when. It comes April, when we have to start seeing what comes back to us. Um, we, we need to understand as an organization like how we go about that and, because we will have to pick and choose, I think, to the point. And from your recommendation, but that's my thoughts.
Mrs. Unley?
So with the behavioral support assistance, so what, what I, what worries me is. First of all, I don't know what the job description is and what kind of degree you have to have, but if we. Say we'd like all of the elementary schools to have it and then we don't get ten or nine. Then do we go to a chart that looks kinda like this where we anticipate different schools where we put them? Or am I jumping too far ahead?
I feel like you might be jumping too far ahead because. I, I feel like we will be in a position to hire the behavior support assistants. Uh, we, we are not. We are not recommending behavioral specialists at this point, which is a, which is a different type of job category and classification. Uh, we, I generally, our instructional aides, IAs, TAs. We're pretty close to fully staffed on those positions and feel like we'll be able to get the right nine people hired for those roles.
But the, could any of the nine already be in our schools and they move over to that and then we hire to replace them?
I think that's absolutely possible.
Okay, thank you.
If the nine hold in the budget, we absolutely will be putting together a job description and working with student services and. Our elementary teams and our current behavioral specialists to develop a job description that we think will meet the needs as we get this started.
For the positions of say the speech language pathologists um or sped aids. Maybe restorative center positions, those stand out in my mind as, as positions that are typically difficult to fill. And or we're already contracting for. Is that correct?
Dr. Brown, could you talk about the speech language pathologists?
So it's been consistent over the past couple of years that we've had to rely on contracted services to provide speech services. Um, specific to the restorative center, we have been able to staff all the positions that we've pushed forward there. And oftentimes we see teachers wanting to work in non-social programs, seeking out those positions. And then. Forgot the last group.
Sped aids self-contained?
Uh, and the special education aides, uh specifically to self-contain, uh we've, we've started the year outstaffed. I would say that throughout the year, we see kind of normal um rates of some, some TAs leaving consistent with. With the division as a whole, so we don't, we don't see a large gap of the self-contained TAs leaving. Um, but we've. Maybe one to two a year that we've had to do some level contracted services at the TA level for self-contained classrooms.
Okay, and is the number, so we, we are currently contracting for I don't know how many speech language pathologists. And this would be an additional four that we would contract for initially?
Those are current allocations that we have that are currently funded under six B, uh, the, the plan that Ms. Carrie spoke about earlier today.
So these are the four that we're already contracting for?
Or that they're actual FTEs. We're, we're taking, we are recommending that they move from the grant budget into the operating budget.
So this, that, the, that has bodies in it, but they are not WJCC staff, they are contractors.
I'd have to confirm with the four funded under six B are contracted or current staff, but I could get that to you.
Okay, and, and I'm sorry to belabor it, but then is the number, the amount, is that, is that the amount that we? Would be hypothetically paying them if they were our staff or is that the amount that we're paying for the contract?
That's the amount of, that's the estimated amount per person as an FTE in our operating budget, so it's our, it would be people. Not what we're spending on contracted services.
So we would spend more than that if we moved them into the operating budget now?
No, I'm sorry, I, I might not have explained it right. So when, when we give you this estimate of numbers. Um, Ms. Ewing uh looks at what we spend to hire. A speech language pathologist and adds in the benefits and then multiplies it by four.
Correct.
And so it would be, we, we would be moving it from the, from the grant budget into the operating budget, which is how that number is derived. Am I, I mean, maybe I'm not explaining it.
Am I not asking correctly?
And that would be, mean that we're, we would be spending more money having them as employees as, as opposed to contractors.
Um, no, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can say that. What, what I think we're saying is that. Be, because of some scenarios related to the six B grant program. We are recommending administratively that they come out of the grant fund into the operating fund. Now. Depending upon whether there's a person in the role or we're contracting out, we put that to the side for a second and say, okay, if we hire these four SOPs. Out of the operating budget, this is what it would cost in order to do that. It doesn't necessarily equate exactly dollar for dollar for what we might be spending on contracted services right now. Okay?
That's my question.
Okay, so and and also similarly, there is a person in that K five literacy role right now that is grant funded. And we are suggesting that that come out of the grant and go into the operating budget as well.
Okay. Other questions? Ready to move on?
We look forward to spending some more time with you.
We continue.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, thank you for the books.
Oh, you know, I think it's, it's, we appreciate the patience and forbearance on beh- behalf of the board. The, the cyber situation provided us a bit of a curve ball with respect to. The budget doc, so thank you for your patience and willingness to to give us another week or so on that and then also. Um, the the idea that you would be approving the budget on the twenty fifth, we we appreciate that week as well, thank you.
Yeah, I think we feel better about that as well, even though it's extra time. Alright, we have two quick action items, uh, eight point zero one, approval of personnel actions, can I have a motion?
I'm chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Ms. Chen?
Hi.
Mrs. Donner?
Hi.
Mr. Hoseng?
Hi.
Mrs. Hundley?
Hi.
And eight point zero two, approval of release from compulsory attendance, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the release from compulsory attendance for case number R twenty four twenty five dash ten.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng.
Mrs. Hundley?
Hi.
Mr. Riffle?
Hi.
Ms. Chen?
Hi.
Mrs. Donner?
Hi.
Mr. Hoseng?
Hi.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Hi.
Alright, I'll move on to board member comments. Ms. Chen, can I start with you?
Sure, um, I just wanted to share briefly, um, an event that I attended last week. Our partnership with, um, the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, so I went to. They put on a performance for all of our fourth graders, so it was incredibly fun to welcome, um, all WJCC fourth graders. Um, to the Williamsburg Community Chapel hosted, um, the event and the symphony. And, um, I think every seat in the entire sanctuary was filled. Nine hundred plus fourth graders, plus teachers, plus some aides, I'm sure that were there and helpers. Um, so it was, it was really a a great experience, we spent an hour together. They encouraged all the students to choose an instrument, um. They did a presentation on, um, different instrument families and the professional musicians played. Um, for all the students, so, um, it was a great experience and it reminded me of. Um, being in public school and going to my first sort of performance, um, with my school. Which I think for a lot of our students, it may be their first time hearing a professional, um, music group or symphony, so. I thought that that was a great example of sort of our community coming together and partnerships we have with the community. So I was very glad to be able to go to that, um, and. If anybody wants to, there's, they're doing it again for all the fifth graders, so, um. That's happening on March eighteenth, so they're going to do a performance at eleven thirty for all of our fifth graders. Um, and they made these beautiful signs for all of the elementary schools with the mascots and everything, so it's a very nice. And, um, organized event and I was glad to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, um, well, first of all, I'll say thank you to everybody, um, for the accreditation and presentation, I think it's a lot to. Digest as a board member, but I think even more for our staff and as the state decides what they actually wanna do in this. Um, so it's something we take in stride and I think I have full confidence in the people in this room and. In our organization to do it properly and to make sure our, our schools land in the chart where they belong. Um, so yeah, that's first and foremost, um, then I also think there's a lot of like apprehension right now when it comes to, um, what's going on in the federal government. Um, in my day job, we had a presentation at work describing some stuff with federal dollars and. I'm gonna go into a little bit of that just to kind of maybe talk about like how that really affects us here locally. Um, and I have, maybe, and we never maybe speak up this ever because it's kind of a scarier thing, but I'm truly trying to alleviate the scare of what's happening. I think, um, our state has a lot of laws that protect us in ways that we should definitely mention at this point. Uh, and that's what, that's what I'm gonna do now, so, uh, I think just from our own budgetary perspective, we have less than. Um, a percentage of federal dollars comes directly to us, like from exactly from the federal government, but then we've, we've received around. In our twenty nine point two percent, um, about twenty five hundred dollars per people, um, across the states, the average, I'm just, I'm just kinda roughballing that one here. But there is, is an important thing to note that the two largest spending categories of the state when it comes to. Federal dollars are, is Medicaid and K through twelve education, the two largest secondary, it's. And the two largest categories in which people should somewhat understand in this category. I I'm mentioning that because the General Assembly did an analysis at their own time, um, an assessment, talking about this. Um, and they identified these two areas of making up a large part of the economy and a large part of what Virginia residents deserve when it comes to services. And so there's a couple of enactments that I I'll, I'll talk about here just to kind of alleviate and then talk about how that, how that works. Um, so clearly we have our own general assembly cycle, where like January through March or forty five days and sixty day sessions where they just do the, the work of the people. And then they have these things called special sessions, which don't really feel too special anymore, to be honest. But they are places where we can kind of, kind of fix and fit some of the stuff that may be happening with the federal government to where we are now. Um, the part that really matters to me is education, but clearly the other part Medicaid is also something people are, um, kind of having shaking heads about, but. The state government has two laws that really prevent itself from, I guess, speeding, like feeding into this like portal, like what happens to these things. Uh, the, the General Assembly has one law that describes that any decrease of a hundred million dollars or more in the general fund, so that's the stuff we're talking about right now. As we try to allocate this surplus or whatever they wanna call it of taxpayer dollars. Um, anything that decreases in that from a hundred million dollars or more, the governor is required to, and the General Assembly to me within twenty days to alleviate that. That that fix, um, so if we see a certain, a large incre- decrease of, you know, funding from the federal government in that category or any of those two categories. Or anything that involves, you know, a hundred million dollars or less or more, we could see the General Assembly come back and take action to alleviate those services. And find ways to kind of, kind of patch the boat and keep it moving. Uh, and I'm just mentioning that because it's something that we are thinking about as we talk about the budget, we talk about like what's going on there. There's a lot of resources out there for federal workers and things like that to the General Assembly's putting together. Uh, but then we series and then there'll be a lot more information coming out of the next four months, um, from this emergency committee. That I just really would think is important that we highlight here, uh, at the local level because eh, these are our people, these are people, we we care about both sides of this issue. Um, but education should maintain its service and should be moving forward, so when we talk about the budget, I think I'm very confident, like what we're gonna get from the state government. And from the federal government when it comes to those things, like whether you're, I don't wanna talk about the nuances of that stuff, but I think I'm confident the state. Will continue to serve our students and our constituents in a way that makes the most sense and we would see almost no, little to none. Changes when it comes to what our students deserve and what they feel in the classroom, so. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair, I think it's an important part I learned and I felt very relieved, I think to an extent because. Um, yeah, I'm a student of the game, but I think it's a part of like learning that stuff is important because there are protections that our state has to protect our systems that are. I think doing quality work and things we can definitely see in our own community, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, thanks for that explanation, Mr. Hoseng.
I just wanna quickly thank all the administrators, but especially Ms. Ewing, uh, for taking care of the budget for us, um. I don't know how you can create a budget when you don't know what our funding partners, what the state, what the federal government's giving us, I mean, it's, this is all such a big hypothetical. But you're keeping us all in line and giving us the best input that you can, so we. I know I definitely appreciate it and I know the whole board definitely appreciates it, so I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng, Mrs. Hundley?
Yes, thank you also, I won't have a bunch of sticky notes like I know somebody that used to, I used to go, oh my, how does she do that? But anyway, um, but thank you, and then on the report for the accreditation, I'm speaking against any intensive services and definitely. No, denied, I just wanna get a stamp and go, denied, I mean, anyway, so I really, um, our kids are gonna rock this and do a good job. It's gonna be a hard month, I'm only four years removed from the classroom and I remember March to April is a long month. Um, but spring break, um, doesn't come until April and spring isn't here officially till March twenty first. But when daylight savings hits, something happens to the students and they're ready for summer vacation. Sometimes even the weather, we go straight from winter to summer here in Williamsburg, so hang in there, um. I think I've heard a few rumblings that we're doing pretty good in track, so, um. Keep your ears open to try to support some of those students that are doing sports during this time. And, um, the shows are getting ready to start, the dramas and the shows, so that hopefully will get us through March and into April. And then before you know it, I told y'all, we'll be sitting on that stage watching our students graduate, so seniors hang in there. Cause, uh, this is gonna be a long month.
Mrs. Donner?
Thank you, um, as I'm just looking at the budget and thank you for the beautiful budget book. Um, I think the thing that just really sta- stands out to me is that about eighty seven percent of our operating budget is towards people. Right, it's salaries and benefits, and so I think there's lots of conversation about how we spend money on different things, but I think just re-grounding on. Um, our budgets are about the people and many of those people live in this community and they are, um, here to serve our children. And so I think just keeping that in mind as we keep pushing forward in the budget that it's eighty seven percent people, so thank you.
And I will just close by adding to that, that, um. Any additional funds that we're asking for from our localities, um, which is, which is actually our. Our community, our, our. Taxpaying neighbors, um, is not, we're not asking for frivolous dollars, we're asking for. Um, Mrs. Donner said people, but we're really asking for ways and pathways to ever increase academic achievement for our students. So that's the ultimate goal, um, we do that by hiring and retaining quality teachers and staff, we do that by. Um, adding supports where we, where we can and and where we identify gaps and we do that. By this year, hopefully, um, adjusting our, um, comp, you know, our compensation scale that has, has. Really gotten compressed in the middle for some time and I understand that that looks like a big number and that seems like this huge. A huge addition in one year, but it really happened over many years and it's going to take some time to correct and. Yeah, I think everyone knows James City County did a very similar thing last year because it happens, it happens in a lot of sectors of of public service and. Um, we still have a, have a responsibility to be good stewards of, of the, the money that comes to us, um. We, we appreciate, um, our funding partners and their desire to, uh, understand. Why we're asking for what we're asking for, what we're going to do with it, how it's going to impact their constituents, I mean, those are, that's their job to understand that. And so we appreciate those questions and those conversations and we're happy to, um, answer them and provide as much information as possible. But, uh, despite, despite the numbers that perhaps look different or or they're, they're big right now. It is not, it is not frivolous, uh, requests and, um, like Dr. Kever said, we will, we also are always keeping an eye on where. Where can we save, what, what can we cut, what can we delay, what, what, what is more essential and slightly less essential, so we, those are all things that are still. Swirling out there and that board members and staff alike are are taking into consideration, so we. Can make sure that we're doing the best, the best for our students and what we ask for and we're doing the best for our community in, um. Being good stewards of, of the money that they allocate to us, so. With that, I will announce our upcoming events. Special Education Committee will meet on March twelfth at five PM in room three hundred of the annex. Uh, Career Ready Advisory Committee on March nineteenth at three thirty PM in room one oh eight of the school board and central office. Consortium of State School Boards Associations Annual National Conference, which means all of us are going to. Um, Atlanta for a conference on March twenty first through March twenty third. And our upcoming meetings. We have our joint meeting with the city and the county on March fourteenth at eight thirty AM at the James City County Rec Center. We will have our closed session, uh, followed by regular meeting on March eighteenth. Closed session begins at six PM here in room three hundred of the annex, regular meeting starts at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. We have a special call meeting on March nineteenth at twelve PM in room three hundred of the annex. We have another special call meeting, as one I mentioned, to approve, to actually approve the budget on March twenty fifth. Um, at four PM here in room three hundred of the annex. And then our regularly scheduled, uh, closed session and work session with an action item is April first. Not a joke, uh. Closed session begins at four PM in room three hundred and the work session will follow also in room three hundred at four thirty. And that is it for tonight, we are adjourned.